Okay, so we have myself, Alan, Jamie, and Kurt on, and we will... Do you need the only alternate number, by the way, Alan? It's just Kurt's a regular number.
Oh, right, okay.
Or just making it aware that Jamie will be voting as our alternate number.
Okay.
Okay, so that's a quorum for us. Hopefully Kurt Osborne does go on. We will do the pledge of allegiance. I have a flag. And pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, the republic which stands one nation, under the individual liberty and justice law. Oh, great. Added agenda items. We do have one that just came through for Scannick Glen tree concern. I would like to add that to miscellaneous number two.
Make a motion to add the Scannick Glen tree concern to miscellaneous number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alan Vayner?
Aye.
Aye.
Kurt? Kurt, are you an aye?
Kurt, you there? You're on mute.
I would entertain a motion to approve our meeting minutes from July 1st. Okay, everybody got those, right? We got this kind of last minute?
Yep, so moved.
Second. Is there a second?
My second again.
All right. Can we have Jamie any discussion? Alan Osborne?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Kurt, are you still there?
There he is.
Am I there now?
Yep, we can see you and hear you.
Okay, I can't. I don't have any video, but I got audio and you can see me, so that's okay.
Okay, are you an aye on approving the minutes from July 1st?
What's that? Yes, I say aye.
Yes, you're an aye, okay.
Osborne, reporting in.
Hi, Kurt Osborne.
Aye.
Um, and then-
And then Osborne, there's no U and no E.
Oh, thank you for that correction. Um, we do not have any meeting minutes from August 5th since we had canceled because nobody had any power. So, moving on, we have a new application. We received 11-2020, the town of Windsor, South Water Street, emergency repair, including lining of a culvert and access road. We have... Hi, Lenny.
Hello.
Want to give us a description of what's going on?
Sure. The state came through a few years ago and went through culverts and bridges, their bridge section, and told us we needed to... There was a few culverts we needed to address and I read the report and it was... You know, I was planning to do this like next year. I did, however, take the initiative to get the to get the culvert drawn up. I had, I hired a consultant, analyzed the entire watershed, which ends up... It is the Blue Ditch watershed, actually, and the culvert is under South Water Street, just south of the I-91 overpass. It's a 72 corrugated metal culvert, which at one time was asphalt coated. The asphalt coat is worn away, the metal is deteriorating and rotting horribly, worse than what we thought. Friday, I was off, but my associate Joe walked over with the contractor and I guess it was the contractor. I don't think that the consultant was there, but they walked through the culvert and it's in worse shape than what we thought. We found out we were having a problem because we started with a sinkhole on the lane of South Water Street, the top of the culvert, and we had marked it to cut it out and to fix it. We temporarily patched it. And then it started settling again, which made us investigate a little further and sure enough, joints in the culvert, something's letting go. There's, it looked like somebody crawled in there years ago and threw some concrete in one of the joints that was messed up, and now there's another one. If you look at the picture, it's probably six inches down. So, we've decided to probably a million or a million and a half to replace this by, if we actually replace the culvert. So, we went with a slip lining in the culvert that we thought was going to be between $100,000 and $120,000. Well, by the time they got done looking at it, and we're now going to have to build new end walls on both ends, I am now at just shy of $260,000 to line it and to do what we need to do. If that lets go, if the road is compromised and that culvert decides it doesn't want to be there anymore, there's a 30-inch sewer main on top of it and a 20-inch water main. We're looking at a $2 million plus problem if we don't fix this like now. So, I had made Ruth Ann aware of it. Like on her first day, I think, which was wonderful for her, I'm sure. She has been very helpful. We are going to be back out on site tomorrow. This is so critical, the tree crew is showing up tomorrow to start cutting trees. The schedule is such that the tree crew will show up tomorrow. They will cut trees tomorrow and Friday and finish up on Tuesday after the holiday. The contractor will show up on the Tuesday and start building the ramp down for our access so that we can get access to the upstream end of the culvert. We will actually be, or the contractor will actually be pulling a 54-inch smooth line snap snap pipe, is what it's called, culvert or piping through the 72-inch ACCMP. My consultant has confirmed that the 54-inch smooth bore will take the same water as corrugated metal. We will be pulling it through from the downstream side. Whoa. We have very little, we have to build a cofferdam down below to keep the Connecticut River out while we're working. It'll be temporary. Currently, it'll be, unfortunately, the river's low enough that we can get away with either the large sandbags or maybe some concrete blocks, however they decide to do it. Though, we have to cut a few trees, minimally invasive, to get a track vehicle down there to pull the pipe through. As they back their way out, when we're done with the project, they're going to restore everything they do on the waterside, on the riverside, back existing conditions and stabilize it. We're going to build a new head wall on the riverside and improve. There's a crappy plunge pool there. We're going to improve that as well, probably have a two-foot-deep plunge pool with riprap. On the up side, we're going to do the same thing, put a new plunge pool, new head wall. We got to straighten the brook out just a little bit. It's kind of funky up in that area. And build a new head wall, huge footings because of the soil conditions out there, which is part of the reason that this project got, you know, went from 100 to 120 to just under 260, and that's still just an estimate. So, that's a good part of my road money for this year, but I can't let that fail. So, that's what we're doing, and I have, I know Ruth Ann has tried to contact DEEP for their part of it on the downstream side. I sent an email off to a woman at DEEP today, myself. My consultant is the same consultant I used to rebuild the Broadbrook Pond Dam, who I'm familiar with, the people at DEEP. And basically, he said that they're all working from home now, and we may or may not hear back from them. This is, this is an emergency for us to fix the pipe. It's not an emergency for them because nothing has happened. Kind of behave ourselves. If this pipe lets go, it's going to be an emergency for all of us. I mean, we're going to have a 30-inch sewer main dumping water into the Connecticut River. So, he basically said, just document that you've tried to contact them and how many times, and eventually, they may or may not get back to us. So, that's between Ruth Ann and I. That's what we're doing. So, that's where we are. Wasn't the way I planned on proceeding with this, but hey.
Well, since 2020 thrown us.
Lenny, thank you for explaining all this, and I was wondering who at the DEEP you guys have contacted as I'm in the same unit that would review this?
Oh, I sent an email to a Jennifer.
Perry?
Yes.
Okay, so she's head of dams right now. So, the gentleman you need to get in touch with is Bill Segman. Can be reached at William.
Jamie, Jamie, I know him well.
Oh, good.
And I've put in three calls to him and as well as the main line.
Okay.
Yeah, trying to, trying to get that connection made, and I have not-
You've had no phone calls or emails in return?
No.
Okay, so just by looking at your proposal and its interconnectivity to the Connecticut River, my hunch is that you will need engineered plans submitted to Army Corps for Connecticut, general permit 19, and a state 401. And that process for review, like you may not get a permit in hand, at least for 180 days, at least. And those plans need the inverts on both sides of the pipe. You need existing and proposed conditions, area of disturbance, table of impacts. And the more information you give them in advance, the faster their review will be. And also, are you getting any money from DOT? Because if you get, if there's state funding involved, that'll also trigger the state 401.
No.
Okay, they'll need to know that. They'll need to know that, too. There's also, there may be an option for an emergency authorization. If you make the case, if you complete your case, there may be an expedited process you can go through, which Bill, if you can get a hold of him, which tomorrow I'll try and get his ear for you, too. And then you should also reach out to the Army Corps for their permit determination because that's going to be part of the process. But like I was looking at the-
That's all, that's all well and good, and no disrespect to anybody, but this is happening, starting tomorrow.
Well, okay, but just like be careful because now I know about this, so, you know, it's good to keep in your- I understand that. I appreciate that. I do. So, like I said, let's see if we can pursue an option for like a state emergency authorization. I think they do exist.
They do, yeah.
Yeah.
That was one of the, there was, I saw the certificate of permission given, you know, the age of the culvert and the type of work that was going on. I thought that we might have opportunities there. Then there's a temporary authorization, and the third was the emergency authorization. And with the emergency authorization, you can submit all that permitting material within 30 days of the expiration of the emergency authorization.
I see.
So, there may be an option for an after the fact, but we need to make, you know, contact with them.
Right, and I'm not sure if like organisms pass through this, you know, fish or otherwise, but I was wondering how the slip line will like raise the elevation of the piping at the outlet. So, is it going to be a hindrance or prohibit passage? You know, that's one thing the DEEP, that DEEP and the Army Corps are not going to, they're not going to want to see that, that raised too much. And then they don't like riprap in the stream channel, so where you might need riprap to stabilize the banks up at the inlet, just be careful about how you're placing that fill.
Yep, but there was, it wasn't my intention to put riprap in the stream channel, maybe a little bit, maybe on the bank to stabilize it. I'm not even sure we need to do that. And the invert is only going to raise, you know, whatever the thickness of the, we're going to run this pipe right along the bottom ribs of the existing 72-inch pipe. So, it'll raise up maybe a couple of inches, and we'll make sure that the stream bed matches it. There's actually a, let me see if I can figure, it's called a hydro bell with flexible coupling. This thing sits on the end of the pipe at the upstream end wall or head wall, and it creates a nice inlet right into the pipe and right down through. Right now, there's, I doubt there's a whole lot flowing through there. This brook goes dry a lot of times during the year. It's minimal, it's a little trickle right now, which is a great time for us to be doing the river being down and their, you know, very minimal flow in the Blue Ditch, if you want to call it. So, we hope to get in and out of here before a lot of much happens, but the flow line or invert of the pipes are on the plan. We only have a reduced copy of the plan, so you might not see it, but they're there, and it will only be raised enough. What happens is we, this pipe will be pulled through. It'll be, it'll be laying basically on the invert or flow line of the existing pipe. Then around the entire top sides, we have to put, we have to grout the entire cavity between the two pipes to ensure that the top pipe or the outer pipe doesn't want to give in after the fact. As a matter of fact, once we get done with that, we're going to have to either cut the road a little bit, or I have a gentleman coming out tomorrow. We may have to drill down through the pavement on top to make sure we don't have voids, and if we do, fill it with some kind of a flowable fill, if you will. But it's, these guys have done this a number of times. I'm in good hands, I believe, and we're going, Joe and I will be overseeing the entire project. If not myself, Joe, we'll be out there every day, making sure that the ENS measures are in place, that they're not doing something that they, that they shouldn't be doing. And if we, if they do have to make modifications and disturb a little more than what they thought, we'll make sure it gets put back the way it was. So, we just, you know, we can't afford the problem if this thing lets go. And once they walked through it last Friday, everybody was quite concerned, so.
Another gentleman, do you know who Jeff Caola is?
Pardon me?
Do you know who Jeffrey Caola is at the state?
No, I do not.
So, he's the assistant director. So, if you have to go up the chain to get somebody to listen, that's Bill's boss.
Okay.
And like I said, tomorrow, I will try to talk to folks to see if they've been able to have an opportunity to look at this and any options for you guys for getting expedited review, but I'm warning you, like it could take a long time to get the state and the federal reviews for this.
Okay.
Could I ask a question, make a statement? I'm not sure what it's actually going to be when I get done, but Hiri Han of LADA Consultants has been leading a stormwater study in Warehouse Point for, I don't know, at least a year now. And I've had the opportunity to listen to that presentation she has about seven or nine times. One thing about this that is really disappointing to me is we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to implement one of the pieces of that plan, which is to turn that invert kind of going the other way. And this was, and I'm no engineer, and I know that sounds crazy. I mean, I used to work construction, lay pipe. We never laid it backwards. But the idea is that what they found in the study, that most of the flooding that happens in Warehouse Point is because it's backflowing from the river into the Blue Ditch. And they found that, and apparently, this is done, and you know, it's above my pay grade, but they had suggested, the engineers, switching that, you know, tilting it back the other way. So, you know, it's got to fill up a little before it actually flows, and then it actually blocks some of the water coming from the river. And I don't know exactly how that all works or what the, you know, we didn't get the details of, you know, the difference in the flow line that they were talking about. It seems like potentially, since we're, you know, at first I thought, well, there's no way we could do that because you're lining the pipe, but now that I hear the detail that you're lining the pipe with a 52-inch pipe, and we have the 72-inch hole right now, seems like you might have the opportunity to implement this if everybody was kind of on the same page and understood and could prove that it was actually what we wanted to do because that stormwater study, that's kind of the crux of like everything else that would be done up the stream, you know? And if we don't at least look at it now, it ain't happening in our lifetime.
Well, understand what she's talking about, and I do not agree with her, but, and by the way, she's not an engineer.
No, I don't think she did it. She, like, there was other people that were doing it.
And I, and I know the consultant she was working with, Nathan Jacobson, Tom Fenton, I know quite well. And I haven't seen, I haven't really seen her study or report and haven't really been able to sit through her presentations. But what you're talking about doing there, that's the $2 million project. Now, you're going to put a pipe, now you're going to have to suspend a 30-inch concrete sewer, a 20-inch ductile iron water pipe with your feed under the river over to Windsor Locks. It, that wasn't going to happen in our lifetime anyhow.
No, and I, when I heard that, number one, I had, you know, some spec, some, I didn't really think it was, would fly, and I'd never heard of such a thing, but but still, like, I feel like we should at least look into if it's a possibility, and I understand. And I, I was looking at this plan and thinking about what she had said and shown in her drawings and whatnot, and I, you know, I noticed, you know, the sewer, the water, the telephone line, everything is there. So, it's difficult, it's complex if it were to be done, but I mean, we do amazing feats of engineering all the time here in this country. So, obviously, this has got to get fixed. Obviously, this is the fix we can afford. I just wanted to bring that up, that if that is a viable solution, and it is one of the keys to that study that was done, we should at least look at it a little bit and maybe have that consultant come out and see if, you know, then talk to the other consultant and see, you know, is it even possible? Since we, it looks like we're going to have a couple of weeks before we actually start doing this, potentially.
The pipe will start to be slid through the other pipe next week.
I saw the traffic thing, so I mean, still-
This, this, this is not, they are very concerned about the condition of that metal pipe.
I'm getting, I'm getting that message.
Lenny, I don't know, I mean, don't you need, I, it's hard for me to listen because like, you know, what are the federal and state permits that are required to install that lining?
Well, I question if we even have jurisdiction here.
Well, you do, because upgrading, we're in, well-
It's a water course, yeah.
Soil, there's a water course that's coming through. You guys do definitely have jurisdiction. There's, I mean-
Tidal River, though. I mean, it's, you don't see the tide here, but it is a tidal, and we don't have jurisdiction in any tidal.
Low elevation 15 feet on the Connecticut River coastline is state jurisdiction. That's where that starts.
Not to mention the connectivity to the water course. So, if we can, could you give me an opportunity just to see what I can do tomorrow? Talk to some folks and see what options are available to the town in the immediate? Can you give me that? Can you give me some time to figure it out? Do some research for you?
You know what? I got to be honest with you. I can give you all the time you want, but I'm not going to be responsible if anything happens in the meantime. I've explained what my concerns are and what my schedule is.
So, is that going to fall on Jason?
Well, I think he's on board with me.
Jason, do you have any comments to add?
I don't know if he's actually at the meeting, but I'm here. Oh.
Lenny, get her done.
There is an immediacy to this that becomes incredibly costly beyond our means if it fails. I have, I, so I'm not an engineer. I don't have any experience in this stuff at all, but I trust that one is. And that if he is coming to us with his long-established track record and saying there is an urgent immediacy to this, and I hate to be redundant, I'm inclined to support his determination. It may not fail over the weekend. It may not fail next week, but if it does, it's a $2 million problem for us, and that's how we pay that.
And well, I would say, too, that, you know, we, we are required to make our decision, and it doesn't matter, you know, it's up to the applicant, whoever the applicant may be, to seek any other permits that they have. So, we can make our decision. We don't have to wait for what may or may not happen at the state and federal, you know, and, you know, you know, get in trouble, but I mean, honestly, the wetlands, we're dealing with our side of it, and the other side of it is not our purview, and we don't base our permit on somebody else's permit. So, we can do ours, no matter what other concerns we may have about whether we need to have Army Corps or DEEP, which it sounds like we probably do, but we still, we make our decision, then applicant, it's up to applicant what they want to do after that.
I would also reiterate that it isn't as though we haven't reached out. We have reached out, a number of staff people have reached out and haven't gotten even the courtesy of an acknowledgement of the contact. So, it's difficult for us to, in good conscience, put something that could be considerably costly when we don't know when we're going to get acknowledgement, that the state even recognizes we have a problem, let alone a pathway to solve it.
Right, and they, and I think, Lenny, you had said this, that as long as you're documenting it, that you contacted them and that you've done your due diligence, then I think that that's kind of all you can do in this emergency situation, so. I mean, it has to get done, so.
My consultant is quite in tune with the feds and the state. And as I said, he's the one that designed and permitted the Broadbrook Pond Dam for us. He's all over the state fixing dams, working down at the shore. He was in Groton today when I tried to get a hold of him. He's well aware of what we're doing and what have you.
Can you remind me of the name of the consultant, please?
Carl Assimovic.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Didn't he used to work for the state?
That I do not know.
Do you know, does he work for himself or a firm?
No, he's, it's him. It's Carl Assimovic.
Yeah, I believe he's, he used to be with the state. Okay.
So, how would the, how would the board- So how would, how would the board like to handle this application? Do you just accept it? And move forward in the process?
Go ahead, Jamie, whoever it was. Rick?
Yes. I'm making a motion. We accept the application.
I was going to say, 2020, just so it's a minute. Alan, were you a second?
Yep. So, in the past, we've accepted an application in one meeting and then actioned it in another meeting. And we obviously are going to accept it and action it. So are we going to do that in a separate motion, or do you want to do that? Yeah, I guess we'll just do it in a separate motion.
I was going to say, separate motion is probably the easiest. Is there any further discussion on the acceptance of the application? Hearing none, all of those in favor. Alan?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
And I don't know who Samsung is, is that the Pippin by chance? Not sure, but our quorum is an aye, so we are good for that one. Alan was like, make a second motion.
Yes, hold on here.
And for this one, I think, yeah.
Make a motion to approve permit number 11-2020, Town of East Windsor, South Water Street, emergency repair, including lining of Culver and Access Road.
With our standard conditions and all that stuff?
Their standard conditions in, as well as the, just a note to make sure that they seek any additional approvals as needed. Make a.
I'll second that.
Kurt seconds, is there further, further discussion?
Rebecca, can I ask, are you going to make that as an additional condition?
I don't think it needs to be conditioned, as long as it's just a note.
Okay.
Alan, is that what your intention was?
Yes.
Okay. Um, hearing no other discussion, all those in favor, Alan?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Kurt's an aye too, and Jamie?
Aye.
All right, all of those are in favor. Lenny, you are good and good luck.
Thank you.
We have no public hearings, no continued public hearings. We have a new business to discuss the appointment of a wetland agent, which is going to be Ruth Ann, and I'm going to put your last name. So do you want to just give an introduction as to who you are?
Sure. I'm Ruth Calabrese, and started with the town last Monday. I have history working with municipalities in wetlands and zoning areas early in my career, which I parlayed into the energy industry. I spent a couple of decades at Northeast Utilities, now EverSource. And just did a three-year stint with TRC Environmental, and now I'm here.
Well, welcome. We are very glad to have you.
Welcome, Lenny.
Thank you.
I recognize your name. I wasn't sure if that was, if you were the consultant or the new hire.
So, if I could just, this is Jason, if I could just take a moment to share how excited we are to have Ruth Ann come on board. The, the Planning and Zoning Department was something I heard a lot about during the campaign cycle. And in the course of recruiting and interviewing for her position, it's very clear to me that she is going to be a true asset to that department and to help move the town forward. And we are just, I cannot tell you how excited I am to have her on board. She's already been a part of the team, and I look forward to what's to come.
As do us. Do we need to make a motion to appoint her as our wetland agent?
Yes.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to, to appoint Ruth as our wetland agent.
Make a motion to, to appoint Ruth Ann Calabrese. Is that, am I saying that right?
Sure, yep. Any Italian will tell me that's how it's said.
Windsor Wetlands Enforcement Agent.
Is there a second?
I second.
Kurt seconds, any further discussion? All of those in favor, Alan?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And it looks like Kurt jumped off somehow, so hopefully he'll jump back on. But I'm all for aye, so welcome aboard. We are super excited to have you on.
Thank you so much.
We have no old business, and moving on miscellaneous, we have the informal discussion of the wetland fee ordinance. Alan, I know this is kind of your, your baby, if you will, from almost a year ago now, I think.
Actually, it goes back probably about 10 years now. So, I don't know Ruth Ann if they've, and so you'll be, your input, I think, will be important. And I don't know how much of this you've been able to review yet, but I'll give you a little bit of the history just quickly, and then you can kind of go over the documents that we have. But we've tried to pass this ordinance twice before. And it was, it failed just barely at town meeting, I think by one vote or two votes both times. So we're taking another crack at it. One of the, I think the, the thing that killed it last time was the fee ordinance, the, the fee part of it. It was, you know, not an ordinance, the, the, actually fee schedule would be, is, based on the ordinance, would be set by the, the, in the wetlands agency. So I think that was the one sticking point that we had left to really kind of go over with this. Although I don't know if everybody has really reviewed it. So I thought maybe we could kind of go over some of it tonight, at least go over. I'd like to go over the ordinance a little bit, and then like, take a look at the flow chart, and take a look at the policy, because I think the policy, on, we will want the First Selectment's Office and the Planning Department to kind of look at it and make sure that it's, you know, still good. I, I mean, I imagine it would be, but this goes back to 2012, so who knows what it is. But we certainly, if we're gonna, we're saying we want a policy, it would certainly be the First Selectment's Office that would want to adopt that. And I don't know if it has to go to the Board of Selectmen or not, but. So I thought we'd just review that and then look at the flow chart. And then the fees, you know, I'd like to get everybody's ideas on, you know, where we've set, or where the fees were set in 2012. So all these documents are basically the last attempt at 2012. I see no reason to really, you know, reinvent the wheel here. This has all been vetted by an attorney, and, you know, it's, looks pretty good. And the concerns that were brought up the first time were addressed in this document. And the fee, I think, was the only thing that was maybe questionable, but I think people thought it was too high. Schedule that was, that was, that would have been adopted post-ordinance adoption by the wetlands agency. But it's something I think that we would want to, while we're doing our presentation, if we, if we, if the agency decides to go forward this, with this, that we would want to make sure it's part of the presentation and see everything from one end to the other, how this is going to affect them. I don't know if I can share without, yeah. Jason, if you're still there, can you give me the ability to share?
I'm always still here. Hold on one second.
Sorry.
All right, you can see your screen, Alan.
All right, so I, I'm not going to bore you by reading through this, but, because I think we've all read through this, right?
Yeah, at some point, brother.
So, and I really wish that Rick and Mr. Pippin were here, especially Mr. Pippin, because I know he has some specific things that he was worried about, but we can go over that again. But, so, I'll just kind of skim over this. Obviously, states the authority to have a fine ordinance is based on the wetlands statutes. And then it says right here, Schedule of Fines, you know, would be adopted by the agency. And that would, of course, be after this ordinance was, you know, passed. And then it goes through and talks about the violations that you would have that if you had no permit. Nature of violations, if you have a permit. And then how it would be served, which is, you know, all kind of basic stuff. And then, and then it gets into the procedures, which I think is kind of more the meat of it as far as what people are, you know, how people want to be treated in the town if they were to have an issue. And you can see that you have 30 days, once you get that citation, to just pay it, or or, you know, say you want a hearing. And then, and then you can see in, in Section 2, you see the, the process for when you would, you know, how you would do that, so they could get a hearing. And then, you know, the, all that process, and I'm not going to read all through that. And, and then how that hearing officer would, you know, would do this. Now, what I'm thinking that, you know, if we were to have a presentation on this, we probably wouldn't want to try to read this whole thing. I think what we'd want to do is create some slides with the bullet points from everything. And, you know, we can include this for everybody to read on their own, but we'd probably have some slides to just kind of get the, the basics out of all this. So, I mean, and that's pretty much it right there. I mean, the, the majority of it is the, the process and the protections, really, for the, for the applicant or the non-applicant, for the, for the, you know, person that's allegedly violated. You know, protections for them, and, you know, really making sure that their rights are being, you know, thought of, and that they're being protected from any kind of attacks from basically, you know, unprofessional attacks by the town. So, so we have that. And this was kind of a good, I think this would be, sorry. I thought I was doing something. I'm not doing anything. We go onto the flow chart. You can probably see it now. You can see that this takes three paths, right? So they, they get, the staff gets reported a violation, they have to go out and confirm the violation. They're gonna, they are going to send a letter. So all that happens prior to us the agency having anything, any input. So then there's three paths from there. The person can go ahead and take care of it and prove that, and, you know, there you go, no harm, no foul, it's done. On, on the smaller violations per se, like things that are in the upland review that are not an immediate impact on the, you know, on filling wetlands or flooding or polluting or, you know, the serious stuff. So stuff that's, you know, you didn't get your erosion control quite right, you're doing something in the upland review area, you know, minor things. Throwing brush on an escarpment bank. Things that we've, you know, contacted people before. I, I guess recently, you know, we had that on Scannick Road, somebody filling kind of their front yard. They didn't realize it was, you know, actually a wetland area. So for those people that, you know, did not respond within 30 days, they could get that second notice. So they, they're not going directly to fines, so you've got 30 days to respond. If they don't hear anything, you get a second notice, you get another 30 days of response. And then after that, then you have the same path as you have as a third path, where now you're taking the violation path. And as you can see, that even can take three different paths. They can go to a hearing, they can do compliance within 30 days and get no fine. Or if there's no compliance or no answer after 30 days, then the agent would come back to the, to the wetlands agency and ask for the permission to find the person because of all of this. And of course, all this is documented. So, so that's how it would work, basically. And I think this also would make a decent slide. We can just grab this and, and bring it up a little bit, and that would be a, I think, a good way to explain what the meat and potatoes of that ordinance are. Then we get to the fine document. This is, I think, where some folks had some issues. I have my idea of what I would suggest to do. You know, you can see, it starts off as kind of the minimum fine per day, because every day is a new violation, is $50. And then it can go up to $1,000, which is, you know, actually polluting wetland or a water course. What I was thinking is to basically chop all these in half. These things do add up fairly quickly for, it can always be adjusted later on if we feel it's being, if it's not causing the deterrent effect that we want it to. But I think it would be more palatable to people where a little bit smaller of a, of a violation fine. Looking to see, then we get to then we get to the actual policy, policy itself. And this is, you know, mostly how staff is going to handle this. And so this is where I think we would want more input from current staff and current, for selectmen. But, you know, it basically kind of rehashes what's in the ordinance and, you know, and turns it into, you know, a, a list of steps, you know, that people in, in the town hall are going to have to file. And this is where the, where it's, it's delineated. It's also in the ordinance, but this is where it's really kind of detailed, you know, what would require, or what would be it allowed as a, you know, we'll give you a second chance, you know, a second violation letter. And so it spells out here, here's the things that would be and would not be, you know, a violation letter, a second violation letter. So again, the big stuff, it's going to immediately go into, you know, a fine if we don't get come, you know, some sort of response in 30 days. And then it just kind of, it just goes through this, this whole, you know, list. So we're, we're not getting ourselves in trouble. And this is the kind of stuff that we need in place. So if we ever were taken to court on it, if you follow this every time, and you can prove it, then you're going to be, you're going to be okay. So, so that's all of it. I'd be curious to see what anybody else thinks about any of that. And if you want me to share anything else, I can do that.
I think you've done a really good job.
I didn't, I didn't do any of that work.
You did a good job presenting it, though, because it's been a while since I've really had a good look at it, too.
I have to say, like, I have been on the various wetlands boards over time when we worked on this. And, you know, I've had input at, from the board level and everything. And, but when this was last done in 2012, I was not on the board. I was on the Board of Selectmen and watched it fail again, which was disappointing. But, so there's been a lot of people in on this, a lot of town staff time went into it. You know, previous wetlands boards, I think Rick's been on, obviously, continuously since like 1972. So he's probably put the most work into it. But I'd like to, you know, any other comments and where you think we should go from here?
I think the flow chart is really useful in visualizing a lot of the text content, at least for those folks who like, you know, are visual and, and need more help understanding what they're getting into and passing this. So I liked that. And the fees, I think, are reasonable. I mean, the intent of all this is to prevent violations from occurring, right? So, but we understand that sometimes So, um, but we understand that sometimes accidents happen and nobody is really, you know, has ill intent or harm out there. And for those situations, case by case, you know, we will apply a lesser fine or penalty. So, um, I think the range of violation penalties are appropriate, given all that. So those are my comments.
Anybody else?
Man, I'm good with everything. Um, I definitely want to see this going back in promotion and hopefully it approved this year, beginning of next year. But yeah, I could kind of go either way on the, on the fees. Like I get that we want to keep it on the little bit of a higher side to prevent things from dragging on and stuff, but then I get it too. So if, if it can be done by, by a case by case, um, to adjust that, I think that I'm fine with how it's currently going.
Yeah. And I don't remember exactly, you know, one thing I do know is a hearing officer can waive everything in the end. If you wanted to, we can put it at zero. Um, if there was compliance and everything. So, you know, it's a, it's a stick. Um, you know, but you don't have to beat them with it, you know? Um, and I think that the, and I, and I think we maybe should check into this, but I also think that the, the wetlands agency has the ability to adjust the fines down. You can obviously go up, but I think we can adjust them down by a vote. No, and that would of course be on recommendation of staff, but I think we have to check on that. I don't remember exactly.
It says the fine up to $500, you know, like, is that in there? We don't have to answer that right now, but like, that would be one way where you could be lower for less, you know, and that kind of thing.
That's an excellent i- uh, idea, I think, because it doesn't, it just says, the way it meets now. It's 50 for this, 150 for that, 350 for this. And I, I think it would be great actually to, to say up to.
Right.
I would like that actually.
Agreed.
Sounds good. It's not rigid.
If we make a change to those things, I think we need to just run it by the lawyer.
Yeah.
But I think that's a great idea.
I think that would be a problem or something.
There's like two kinds of things that like, you know, I think we, you know, when we do this presentation, which we certainly don't mind doing, at least some of it. You know, based on our experience on the board, we, we see two kinds of things. Uh, we see the homeowner that doesn't know, they didn't know they did it, nothing wrong. Then they get this letter or somebody comes by their house and they're shocked and angry and, you know, upset about it. And, and, um, you know, we're certainly not looking to. But, uh, you know, sometimes, and it's very, very rare, but we have had it in the last four or five years where you do get a homeowner that is just like, well, you know, hurts. And, you know, our only choice is then to take them to court, which is expensive for them and to us. And, you know, that should be a last resort, I think, um, because you're not going to get compliance during that time that you're waiting for that. Then the other thing we see, which we've, you know, um, I don't want to point fingers at any developments that we've seen recently, but, um, you know, we had a long running development in a very highly sensitive wetland area that it was constant fighting with the developer to get things done the way they should have been done. Again, if we had had the ability, when things got really acrimonious to lay a fine, we would have gotten, um, I think compliance a lot quicker. And after that, less of the, of the hogwash, you know?
That's why I wouldn't cut the fines in half. You don't want it to be affordable, right?
Yeah.
And, and the history of this is the reason why I believe, uh, it failed last time is it was the homeowners. So it's, it's the homeowners that are voting on this, right? And so they're looking at it as like, how does this affect me? And, and I, and I don't think that we, you know, put the message out there of, you know, there's two, you know, there's two different scenarios here. Basically, there's the homeowner and then there's a developer who, who could be in your town wrecking things that are rightfully yours, right? So I think that's an argument that, that could be made. But then, you know, when a homeowner looks at like, I could get fined a thousand bucks and I didn't even know I was doing anything wrong, they even forget the whole fact that there's a process to this and there's 30 days and there's, you know, people are going to pretty much, you know, hopefully act professionally with you. Then, you know, it's harder to sell it to them. And so that's why I was, I was, I'm willing really to concede some of that upfront um, and adjust it later to help get the thing in, you know?
And I think if you say that up to language in here, I think that that'll hopefully alleviate some of that concern as well. Because it could be 25 for residential and then 50 for business or something like that. So that can be determined on an as needed basis. So I think even if we just have that language in there, that might resolve some of the concern.
The part I would agree about with that is like, there's always the assumption that everybody's going to be treated the same. And I don't know if you can say, oh, a business is going to pay more.
Yeah, I just had that example.
I mean, I think we'd have to look at that, um, you know, from a legal standpoint again.
Yeah. So is there anything that we want to move forward with tonight? Do you want to make the changes and put in here that language of up to and, and have the lawyer take a look at it? Or where do folks want to kind of move forward with this? Because I think we should move forward with this.
I'm not sure we're quite ready for the lawyer yet. I think that maybe what we want to do in this meeting, because we don't have Dick as definite opinions on this, and I want his input, um, and, and Rick. Uh, maybe that we would refer the policy document back to staff and the first selectmen for their review to make sure they like it. And if they want any changes, then we can update all the documents with, um, I don't know if we're going to get it in 2020, but eventually we got to update these documents from 2012. And then I don't know what else maybe we could do. Does anybody have any ideas of other things that we could, that we need to check, check or changed? Yeah, I don't think so either. I think it's, it's pretty golden.
I think it was pretty golden a couple of years ago and it just needs to be brought back to life.
Yeah. And I think we have to have, or, and, or even if we don't, we want to have a public hearing in the wetlands to introduce it from our standpoint. And I think we need to visit the board of selectmen and let them know what we're up to and get their buy-in as well. And so we have those things to do, but I want to make sure that we, well, I mean, we are like 98% done, right? So we, we probably could start that process of at least talking to the board of selectmen after we get the policy back. Um, so like, maybe we could do that like next month or something.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
And then I think November, you know, we got the election going. We got some other things cooking that we want to, you know, convince people of and whatnot. So throwing this in, I think before November, it's going to maybe be too much. And so I'm, I'm thinking we target, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to get into the height of budget season, right? So it's either, I don't know, maybe, and we, you know, we can talk to the first selectman about thoughts he may have with it later on. But, um, you know, either December, January, February, or really then it's got to wait till next summer. So, and I don't know if I want to wait that long.
Yeah, I think the whole December, January, maybe into February thing is, would be a good timeframe other than the holidays. Um, I can't remember how they fall this year and stuff, but potentially for January, we can really push this thing.
Yeah.
So.
I like that.
Send me things to the board of selectmen for them to look at or wait until we set another meeting to have Rick and Dick to put on here.
Maybe we should try to get on a, a, uh, yeah. Well, I think we should send the policy back to the board of selectmen. It'll, that'll maybe go to, you know, at least to the first selectman. I don't know if the, if he needs to bring it or wants to bring it to the board of selectmen. Um, and then they do, then we'll need, you know, to get on one of, that'll have to get on their meeting and then back to us. Then we can do whatever we're going to do and then we vote. So we could probably vote to have a public hearing next month, maybe. What do you think? Not to have the public hearing, but to vote on it next month when we have. So we, I really like, and I'll call Dick before the next one and, and make sure that he knows it's, it's, we're going to be discussing it just in case he's, I know he has a hard time sometimes with the technology and whatnot. So.
I think that's reasonable for a timeframe though. Give your current input from either of you guys?
No, I think that sounds like a good pathway to take and I'm happy to make a motion, um, if others agree, uh, to consider voting on everything you just mentioned next month, next time we meet.
I would second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All of those in favor? Alan?
Wait, what's the motion? I'm sorry.
A motion to consider voting on, um, your proposed, I don't know how to articulate it, all your proposed ordinance, um, violation ordinance materials. Oh, and then, uh, bring it, presenting it to the board of selectmen, right?
Yeah, I don't think we need to vote on it this time because I think we just want to have the consensus this, this point, at this point. And the consensus that we want, uh, staff to, um, staff to take a look at the policy. And then, you know, we would certainly, um, I think want to take action next month at the, at the latest to get this ball rolling.
So do we need to have a motion to at least push it to the board of selectmen or?
I don't know. I mean, we can. I mean, I mean, we can always vote on whatever we want, you know, to put it on the record. So I'm not saying we can't have this motion. So, um,
I think it's too soon now. I think this is, I think that's the intention for next month. Jimmy is to push.
I understand. Thank you.
Yeah. So do you want to resend your motion?
We resend my, my motion.
And then Kurt resend your second.
I second.
Okay. So then we can just say that we're going to pass this along, um, the ordinance to the board of selectmen just for their review and for any comments for our, uh, October meeting. And then we will move forward from there. Is that correct?
Yeah. And do we want to have, um, just refer this whole package of documents back to staff and get their opinion if we need to have it, uh, kind of dusted off by the, by the attorney? I mean, do, do you think that we need to make sure, do we, do we need to have the attorney review at all? Do we need to have attorney, attorney review after the vote, assuming we may need to make changes to what's already done? So yeah, I guess we don't want to, okay.
Yeah, you want the attorney to look at it.
Yeah, I think right now the attorney doesn't need to look at it because it's been changed since the last time it was with that fine attorney. But I think if the board of selectmen has comments and changes that they want to make, and then of course, any changes that we want to make, then it would go to the attorney. So yes, but not right now.
When do we want to talk to the board of selectmen? Do we want to talk, we don't want to, we don't want to set a, we don't want to set a public hearing on this before we talk to the board of selectmen about it and get their input, right?
Right. So looking at the calendar, the first is a Thursday. So the board of selectmen would have a meeting on October 1st. Our meeting would be that Wednesday at seven. So then there'd be a week with no selectmen. So then the 15th would be one. So we could potentially try to get on that agenda for the board of selectmen.
Okay.
Cause there's three, um, there's five Thursdays in the month of October. So schedules would be a little bit gapped at the end.
Okay. So if we're going to, I think we need to like kind of, if that's the date that we want to get on, we need to decide if we can get, um, a PowerPoint presentation put together that we would kind of pre-flight to them. It would be the same presentation that we would give to the public hearing. Um, so I think we could probably work on that in between meetings together.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Anybody really, really want to do a PowerPoint presentation?
I can help. I, I definitely could help review one. Um, if somebody wants to clobber like anything together preliminarily and I could just add to it.
Yeah. Is everybody good with Google Docs that I can just create a Google PowerPoint? And then if people want to add to it themselves, they can, but I can get a template or if you started at least one thing.
That would be perfect. And, uh, you know, one of us could take a first pass at it or we could all take a slide, um, break it up like that.
Yeah. Okay. Kurt and Jamie, are you guys good with the Google Docs?
I haven't used it in a long time, but I'm sure I could figure it out.
Okay.
I haven't had to deal with anything on that.
Okay. It's not, it's not hard. You need to set up the account if you don't have one, but I think you might be able to not have an account. I'll have to double check, but I'll share it out and we can test it before we like move forward with it. So.
Yeah, I can review it and, uh, and if I see any problems with it, then I would bring that forward.
Okay. So I can get that started, um, in the meantime with just the basics from the lawyer, if we can use one of those things. Um, so will either move or peg, put together all of the documents that are, go along with the ordinance to the board of selectmen or the first selectman rather?
Yes, we'll do that.
Okay.
A question, Alan, um, when this was raised a couple of years ago, do you already have like a PowerPoint from some years ago that we can like, um, piggyback off of?
Um, you know, I do remember there was a PowerPoint at some, at some point, but, you know, that's probably, I don't know if we could find it at this point in time. You know, I'm thinking we want to be three slides, five at the most, you know, really, really, you know, just hit what needs to be hit, like the flow chart. You know, one or two slides that has the bullets of the actual ordinance and, um, and then a, a slide of the fees. So that's, you know, like three to four slides.
Yeah.
You know, and it's as sparse as possible, but telling the full story, you know, because you don't want to destroy people.
So we have one slide that, um, sorry to interrupt, uh, one slide to visually represent like, uh, just with like three photos or something that could represent all the way from the homeowner who made an accident, you know, um, and he might be, be considered at the lower end of the penalties than somebody in the middle. Cause I'm sure you guys have plenty of memory or examples to come off of. And then all the way at the top would be an egregious violation by a monster, you know, land developer or something. Just something visual to represent our aim or intent.
I don't know if we can go that extensive and like call people out and point fingers.
We don't have to use names or, or the, you know, trucks in the pictures or anything, but.
Yeah. I mean, we can always just talk about it too and say that this type of example would be very extreme and then this would be very high extreme.
Sure.
Just do it that way.
And, and maybe, uh, at the end, we could have a few sides of, you know, just generally like, you know, here's like a violation, you know, and I don't know if we could find any photos or anything like that, um, of, you know, you know, and, you know, it would be nice to be able to remind people we have industrial sites. We have gravel pits. We have, you know, different things that, um, you know, and we have a, you know, what are we trying to protect?
Yes.
So we have a little bit of a narrative to go with it, I guess, that would be in the beginning or the end. I don't know. But, you know, why is it important? What are we trying to protect? We have the Scannick River watershed, um, that cuts through our town. And, and we're, we are actively trying to protect that. Various groups are in this town are trying to protect it. The state is protecting it. Um, you know, and, and how do we, you know, do our part there? And, you know, and people don't want to live where, where things are going to be polluted. And, you know, you want to see, you know, next to their house getting all wrapped up. They want to know that we're able to do our job. So I think that's the, that's the kind of the, the narrative part that we need to get together. Kind of give some, some feeling to it.
Right. To remember the, the mission, you know?
All right. Well, anybody got anything else that I don't have about the fees? I think we're, we were a really good place to keep moving forward with this. So hopefully, um, Rick and, um, So hopefully, Rick and Dick will be able to jump on, connect me. And if they're not able to jump on, to at least call either Alan or myself to kind of give us their input and make sure that's accurate.
And I want to thank you, Peg, for getting, finding all these documents and getting them all to us. Really saved us all a bunch of work.
Yes, thank you, Peg.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. They were in the file.
Okay, at least they're organized.
Yes.
Okay, so let's move on to our added agenda item for the informal discussion about Scannick Glen and that email.
Okay.
If you have a chance to read that. You just wanted to kind of...
Yeah.
...go on there.
Okay, so we actually, I think it was the building inspector who brought to our attention that in the back of, behind the condos at Scannick Glen off of Folkestone Road, there was some debris, some downed trees that were in an escarpment area. So that brought me out to the site this week with Joe to see what was going on over there. And there are a few trees that are denoted as, you know, with an X, that they'll be coming down. Rand did send out an email to the homeowners association and property manager asking that activity cease until the zoning office could weigh in. And since that time, I received an email from one of the members of the homeowners association concerned that these trees that have been marked are hazard trees. There have been incidents in the past where trees have landed on units and they're trying to make safe over there. And I got a call from the property manager today to discuss his concerns. You know, he's looking at a liability. He's got damage from the last storm that caused damage to a roof. And he wants to be able to manage the hazard. And I explained to him that deposition, you know, in that regulated area would have to cease. And he brought up an interesting plan of attack that he's looking at where he knows it's the escarpment soils. What he really wants to do is get to the trees that are likely to fall, that have been identified, and fall towards the units. He wants to kind of top them maybe halfway and allow that portion of the tree to fall on the embankment leave and leave the root structure in place to keep it stable. Which, you know, I think the issue is you can't really get heavy equipment back there because it's really narrow and, you know, not all that stable. So I told him that I would bring the issue to your attention and report back with next steps.
So he's proposing to just have a climber go in and basically drop the sections of the trees that would be sufficient to make it no longer a hazard?
Correct.
Kind of like that idea.
You do or you don't?
I do.
Yeah, because that's what I was thinking too. Because I was kind of questioning why this was coming up. Because if it's a hazard, they can still cut trees in the upland area and everything, but they just can't stump it. So I wasn't sure why this was...
I have the same question. I had the same thought too. It's not clear cutting, they're not grugging, and that was a new discussion today. I was out there earlier in the week in relation to, it looks like, you know, heavy deposition of landscaping debris in, on the bank. And that, you know, that was the issue that was at hand, that he was asked to stop all activity. And so he proposed this for managing the hazards. I thought it would bring it. I liked the idea as well. I thought it made good sense.
I'm totally fine with it too. It's a very wooded area. I understand it's a very steep bank and there's very tight corners behind those houses to get any equipment back there. So dropping and leaving them to the habit of that, I think is fine. Jamie or Kurt, do you have any input on this?
Yeah, I strongly agree with that. I've lived there and I live in a condo complex where huge cottonwood trees have come very close to our property and they're rooted in wetlands as well. So I really feel for them and I strongly support it.
Okay, Jamie?
I have no comments.
So the only additional thing I would add there is it is a violation to pile stuff in the escarpment slope. And I think when we, previous years, and this goes back a while, so I'm a little rusty on it, but the previous wetlands agent, when it was Robin Newton, and she had, I think, I don't know where she got the information, if she got it from DEP or what, but they had basically, you know, the upshot of it was that piling a bunch of stuff on an escarpment slope is likely to make that escarpment slope slide or make it more likely to slide. So, I mean, that we need to find a solution to, I think, you know?
And I wondered on that front too. Does it cause more harm to try and figure it out of there at this point? Is it a cease and stabilize kind of thing?
I think for the tree, I think it's picture two and the attachment that is, like, completely fallen sideways. To leave that as it is, I don't see that it's leaning on anything else. Yes, it's an upland, but nature took its course and laid it down. But I think in terms of cutting the tops off, the other trees that need to be taken care of, that if at all possible, to take those out and either tie them up or get something over there to at least take those off of the front and not put them into the care of the scarpment, I think would be the ideal solution.
Yeah, I think that we, and I think I agree with you, Ruth Ann, that the taking all that out is probably more trouble. But we can't always, we can't always go by that because, you know, it's not basically allowing a violation to stand. But in this case, you know, it's an organic material that I think that they need to be told that do not dump any more there. And if we find more dumped there, then we're gonna have to have it all removed. But, you know, so they need to find some other way to get rid of their landscaping tree. We're not dumping, you know, clippings, we're not dumping, you know, any of the shrubbery, cuttings and all that stuff. I know the landscaping company doesn't want to have to haul that away. It's more cost to them and, of course, then the association doesn't want to pay to have it all the way because it's more cost to them, but they need to find a different solution. Maybe they chip it on-site to some faults. But we, yeah, I think we need to say that, you know, they can't do that anymore. And if they, and if we find it, that's, you know, it's all got to go. But maybe just let, let what's there lie.
So...
I think that we need to also vote to authorize Ruth Ann to make an agent decision on this.
I'd agree. Go ahead, Alan.
Make a motion to refer this to the wetlands agent for decision.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alan? All right. Thanks, Ruth Ann, for taking care of that.
Sure.
All right.
Maybe we send that in a letter so we have it documented.
Yeah, that was my, that was my intention. And in that letter, just so that I've heard everybody write, to leave what's the deposition that's there in place and cease any further deposition of landscaping debris in that regulated area. And then, when topping the trees, remove all that is, that you can, right? Physically can remove from the upland area. Some was likely going to fall deep into the ravine and...
Yeah.
You know?
Yep, I think you got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There are no agent decisions. We don't have anything for status reports. Are there any new violations? That have come from your past legal work?
I did get out to one site, but I have not contacted the property owner yet, so I'm gonna reserve.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. No courses, seminars, or trainings? Is there anything that's being done online? I vaguely remember talking about this at the last meeting, but I don't remember.
I tried to go online. Sorry, go ahead, Alan.
No, you go ahead. I've run my mouth.
I tried to go online. I applied a month ago and I haven't heard back, either from the state or from the college that's administering the test.
Having the same issue I've...
Okay.
Yeah, it's just slow going.
I'm not surprised. So I guess as you guys hear more information about this, just to share that with the rest of us. But otherwise, we'll just think that it's everything is status quo and there's no movement on it. Are there any correspondence? And any general board discussion?
I just want to say that I've not forgotten my challenge. We all need to take as much of the deep training by the end of the year. Keep bringing it up, even if there is no response.
Okay, and then question, which I don't remember. When do we usually elect our positions? Is it every year or every other year?
Every year in December.
December, okay. Just so I can keep track of when I have to add it to the agenda.
I don't think you're getting it.
I'm not trying to. Um, any other board discussions?
Becca, this is Peg.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I'm going to bring your meeting schedule to you at your November meeting. Because I have to file in the town clerk's office in December. So, see you in November, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, do you want to review your bylaws again as well?
Just did that, so I would say we're probably okay to pass them out.
Okay.
I would agree.
Okay.
I think we were, like, digging around for, like, typos this year, so I think we got it pretty good.
Yeah, I think we're good to wait off a couple of years.
Okay.
Okay, on the politicization, which is Jason. Otherwise...
I'm good.
Okay, thanks. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
He's checking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.
Bye.
Good night.
Pleased to meet you, Ruth Ann.
Same here.
Thank you again.